Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission, Stillwater Planning Commission Regular Meeting Tuesday, July 17. First item for business is land use items for discussion of possible action. Trinitus Form-Based Code Alternative Compliance, FPC 18-01, requesting review and approval of an alternative compliance to the Form-Based Code for parking at property addressed as 416 West Maple and 113 Southwest Street in the T6 transect. Staff?
Yes, Lance Gross with Development Services. The alternative compliance before you tonight is for the Stillwater lofts. The purple boundary on the map indicates the subject site. To the north is Elm, to the south is Maple, to the east is Duck, and to the west is West. And this is in the T6 district of the Form-Based Code. To give you a little history, this is the original design. And in October of 2017, the applicant submitted an alternative compliance request and was approved for the size of the sign, the type of awning, and also to omission of the fifth-story step-back. This is what was submitted recently. And it shows the parking garage is located on the first floor. And it's been reduced to six stories. This is the, actually, it's a graphic from the code. And it basically explains the first layer, second layer, and third layer. And currently, parking is allowed only in the third layer. The applicant is requesting to allow parking in the first, second, and third layer. This is a view to the southwest. And you can see the articulation on the facade still continues from top to bottom. And the first-floor elevation, the openings for the parking garage have the architectural metal screening. This is a look, a view from the northwest. And the entrance to the parking garage is right here. And at this elevation, it's about six and a half stories. And the findings. Expand the parking garage to include the entire first floor except for the office space. It's the same footprint as what was originally submitted. Reduce from seven stories to six stories. They're using the same building materials. Building articulation is the same for all stories. The architectural metal screens help to conceal the garage. Are there any questions?
What road is it that the entrance to the parking garage would?
Actually, there's an entrance on the north and also the south.
Okay, so that image that we saw that was on the north on Maple?
Yeah, can you show that picture that showed the parking garage entrance? It was looking from?
Let's see. This one?
That one.
Okay.
So, is that a street passing out front? And what street is that?
This would be Maple.
Maple?
Yes.
And?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maple is the south then?
Correct.
And there would be an entrance on Maple as well?
That's correct.
Any questions for staff?
I have another question. What is the action that's going to be going before the city council? What is the action that we're making a recommendation on, legally speaking?
I don't know what you're asking.
What are they here asking for?
These changes.
Alternative compliance.
A finding of alternative compliance?
Yes.
And that finding is necessary to allow them to build a project under the existing Form-Based Code?
Yes.
On an existing site plan? I mean, has the site plan and project already been approved?
I don't believe the final site plan has, no.
Okay, so, I, so this is one of those things where they're looking ahead at getting the zoning issues wrapped up before the site planning comes through. Okay, I want to make sure I'm clear on what's being asked. Coming from California where we used to normally take it all at once, I'm still getting used to it. So, I appreciate the patience. But, so this is just asking the question on this alternative compliance issue?
That is correct.
Okay.
And keep this in mind, it does not go to the city council.
Okay. It does not go to city council.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the item, please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. Here representing the owners tonight. And I also have several people here with me that will be speaking as well. Just to touch base on some of your questions. So, in alternative compliance, what we're asking for is, in this Form-Based Code area, we are not allowed to build a parking lot within that first and second layer. It has to be in that third layer, which in this case happens to be 20 feet away from the property lines along the road. So, we are requesting our whole bottom level to be the parking garage. We actually have a level, a second level of parking that's a basement level. And then five stories of apartments above that. So, that bottom level is a parking garage. And we, our nearest wall is one foot, four inches back from that property line. Now, the wall of the parking garage articulates, the architect can use much better language than I can. It comes, it goes in and out as, so along Duck, per se. This is 1.4 feet away from the property line. You can see we have these jut-outs going in and out along the building as you're walking along the parking lot, or, sorry, the sidewalk. I believe those set back about five feet. So, that's the specific part that we're asking this request for. It does not go to city council. You guys are the yes or no to this. And so, we are, we are saying based on different things that we've done architecturally, landscaping, that we are still going to meet the intent of the code to make this pedestrian-friendly.
What was the reason for changing the plan from having the parking lot enclosed to having it on the lower floors?
I don't know the exact answer of that, but it was a full redesign of the project. And so, previously, the parking garage was located entirely in this center area and wrapped by apartments. We've, I think, probably changed style of construction and went to this podium style. The architect may be able to speak more to that. So, in this building, we do have five stories of apartment building, apartment levels with the bottom, the bottom level, and this is, it's, I'm sorry, this is so confusing. So, as you come in off of Maple, you come into the first story, which is the parking garage. And then we have five levels of apartment, building of apartments above that. If you come in off of Elm, which is the north side, you'll go down a level into the basement, and that's the second level of parking garage. They don't have an interconnecting ramp interior. That's why you're seeing two access points. They each access a different level of the parking garage. We were, in order to get our required number of parking spaces, that ramp takes up some room. The, I would say, the main access point is on the south side off of Maple. Our leasing office is located on that level. So, any guests that come in, they would park in this front area. That's where our handicap parking is located. And then they would access the leasing office on that level.
And there's no on-street parking around there, it's entirely?
That's correct. If you enter off of Elm, you would go down into the lower level. And that's just, that's all parking. There's no leasing or any other structures down there. The bed count is approximately the same. We're planning on 702 beds where previously it was 704. Parking, we're still meeting all the required parking numbers for, and utilizing the motorcycle in parking and also providing all the bike parking that's required by code. With this style of structure, we are locating the amenities such as the pool and courtyards on the second story. So, you would have the two parking garages. And then on the first story of apartments, the interior of that would be where the pool and such are fitness area. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the architects. Do you have any questions for me right now? Feel free to ask, ask me back up if you need me.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please give your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Will Quintanilla with Humphreys and Partners Architects in Dallas, Texas. Wanted to speak a little bit more to what Kelly was saying. This is a rendering of the southeast corner of Maple and Duck. I think we presented it just a few moments ago. Wanted to clarify from the old design to this design. The, this new design shows at that first level, you know, the exact same building footprint as the apartments up above. And I have here, by having the garage and apartments with the same footprint, it allows to unify the two separate occupancies into one building by carrying the architectural elements down to that garage level. So, we wanted to make it clear that it wasn't, we weren't really having a garage there. We wanted to have, because we were bringing it from the original design, which was wrapped behind the building, we still wanted to maintain that we were, it was completely hidden or you really couldn't tell until you, you know, as you walked along the streets. The window openings of the upper residential areas are carried down and mimicked in size with metal mesh. So, that's the, that's the main difference. You have, you know, windows up above at the apartment level, but down below, we have the same size window openings, they're same, the same heights, same widths. They're just going to have metal mesh instead of, instead of glass. And then we break up, at that, at that corner of Maple and Duck, we break up the amount of garage by utilizing a clubhouse and leasing center. And it has store, that's the area that we would have, we have storefronts there as well as awnings to kind of help soften it up a little.
Where? Can you say that again?
Right, in, at this, at this corner here. The entire first level is garage except for this corner. If I go to the previous example, that is located in this, in this corner right here.
You were using the term storefront architecturally, not in terms of use. Does that where the office area and such?
Yeah, this is, this is the office area. I meant storefront windows.
Okay.
Okay. This, this north elevation along Elm has the entry going into the basement as we described. We've added various shrubs planted between the building and protrusions, as well as the use of split-faced block down at this lower level. You can see this white block that we have going on at the lower level kind of helps soften the atmosphere for the pedestrians. And then we use the decorative metal mesh to veil the activities within the parking structure and merges into the streetscape with aesthetically pleasing forms. Translucent pattern blends in with the landscape, creating a variety of depths that I level. I actually brought with me a sample of the metal mesh. If you guys would like to take a look at it.
So, the reason for the redesign then was to, that, the idea of unifying the structure visually so that there wasn't the big block of parking?
Yeah, yeah, so, the original design had the garage hidden inside. I think somebody asked that question, why was it changed? It was a metal-framed building, one type-one construction, which means that it was all non-combustible. And it was just, it, from a cost standpoint, it was, it's a lot favorable for us to go with a wood, wood frame, traditional wood-frame apartment style. So, everything's wood-frame on the apartments up above. We are still required to do non-combustible construction at the garage level. So, everything down there is still non-combustible, concrete, concrete walls in columns with the metal mesh and the stone face.
So, it was mostly a cost issue?
Yes, for the, for the change, yeah.
Can I ask you, your, Kelly mentioned that the bottom two levels are parking and then a layer, the layer with the amenities and I think office, or that's out front. And you'd mentioned there's five stories of apartments atop. Is that five stories of apartments above the amenity level, or does that include the amenity level?
So, there is one, one level of parking structure that's the ground level.
And one below that?
There's one below that, that's a basement level. Above, above that first level of garage, we have five levels of apartments.
And the amenities are on one of those levels?
The amenities are on that, the, yeah, the, the.
But they don't take up?
Second level. Or the first level of apartments.
Okay, so the amenity level is also the first level of apartments?
Yeah. At this, at this, this is the, this is the ground level or the first floor. This area has the, the office leasing center area. Right abo, directly above it is the fitness center and amenity space. And then we have several courtyards and the pool that sit above the garage.
Open to the air?
Yeah, they're open to the air, but they're, they are hidden behind the perimeter of the building.
Are, they're on the rooftop, or are they ground?
On the roof, the roof of the garage.
Okay, so they're contiguous with the daylight level of the soil from, like, off-site? Would they be roughly contiguous this way? Or are they above or?
They're.
Ground level?
They are on the second level, so they're right above the garage. But you can't see them, you can't see any of the amenities from, from any of the streets, west, Duck, Maple, or Elm.
They're, it's above?
It's, but it's above.
Because it's on the second, okay, gotcha.
It's above, but whenever you say roof, I don't want you to, I don't want to confuse it with, it's not, it's not above the fifth level of apartment.
No, no, it's above the second level of parking.
Yes.
But the second level of parking is above ground level?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
So, we went and added a combination of various sizes of trees and shrubs around the building's footprint. We, again, you know, we wanted to hide the fact that there was a garage going on there. Wanted to unify the build, you know, the apartments and the garage within. But you still have that, you know, you're not really fooling anybody with just the metal mesh. So, we wanted to, we wanted to make it a more pleasant experience. So, we, we added a number of trees and shrubs around the perimeter to kind of help soften that, that area up for pedestrians. Having the sidewalk tucked between the building and the rows of trees along South Duck Street creates a safe pedestrian path and offers an inviting walk along the building perimeter. Here's, here's some of the elevations. Not sure if y'all have any questions about those, but you can see the forms of the apartments up above continue straight down. The size of the windows continue straight down into the, into the garage level. Are there any questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item, please step forward, give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff alternatives.
Let's see, the alternatives are accept findings and approve the application, approve with amendments, or deny the application.
Okay. Any, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question for staff.
Sure.
All right, looking at the findings, finding number four says that the development is in compliance with the Form-Based Code. Is that, how is that finding, what is that finding based on? I was a little confused because at the top, under discussion, it said that, oh, excuse me, I miscited. Hang on a sec. It's, oh, I'm sorry, under background, it says Form-Based Code requires parking to be in the third layer of the parking placement for properties located in the T6 zone. So, is?
It's only, I mean, it's in compliance with the Form-Based Code insofar as it uses the same material on the parking garages and apartments.
Yeah, so is it in, right, so the way that the finding is written is, I can't tell what you're claiming is in, consistent with the code and not consistent?
Okay, let's see. Which finding are you?
Number four.
Number four.
Which is written differently up here.
Yeah, it's written differently than what the staff report.
Okay, so which one do we go off of?
The screen.
The screen.
Okay, hang on, let me, let me, give me a chance to read that then. That's what's published?
The paper.
The paper is what's published?
Paper is published.
Okay.
It's published online.
Okay, so this would be the legal one. We would have to make a move to accept the alternate, make the findings as presented here. Okay, but, so my question is, those findings, are those all the findings, or are there more? Just one through six?
Those are all the findings.
Those are the sheets that we were given. Yeah, from the, from the, the online, the online, it's got these, it's got six findings.
Do you want to see my?
No, I thought I printed out, I printed out.
I mean, they're, it is differently phrased.
No, yeah, I have that one. I mean, I printed out my copy as well. My question is, are the findings up on the screen there the only six findings that staff is proposing to make? Or are those in addition to the original six that are listed in our paper copy?
I think these are just rephrasings of the same ones.
Correct, yeah, they're not.
Because the ones up there don't mention the Form-Based Code.
The findings that you see on the screen are a summarization of the findings that are in your report. We were not going to take each, and sentence-wise, that's not how we're trained to do PowerPoints. It's more of a summarization. The report findings are the legal binding findings that, as Mr. McGrath has indicated, are published. They're online, they're what you have reviewed the applications for. The PowerPoints are summaries of the information that is in the report.
Okay, well, I think from a legal aspect, is that an appropriate way of presenting? I mean, it's something we're going to discuss, we can discuss off-air. It's a personal question that I have. So, it has nothing to do in particular.
This is what's published and handed out, this is the legal.
Yeah, gotcha.
Which work off of, yes, that's provided.
And this is what is sent out to us as well?
Yeah. Not, not everyone that views the Planning Commission meeting either live or after it's recorded and replayed back has access to the report. It's easier for them to just have the summary.
Well, but see.
During the presentation.
The findings, the, personally, okay, I'll just back up and say personally, if we are making motions based on findings and we're reading the findings and there's different findings being shown on a screen, personally, personally, I have a problem with that. So, I don't know the legality for Oklahoma, so I'm just saying it at that. To have different sets of findings is confusing, and now I'm confused. This is a confusing case, which wasn't helping any. I understand not, from a PowerPoint perspective, not wanting to just read stuff off PowerPoints that are just repeats of what's already on a paper. But from a legal basis, it seems like it would be clearer if the findings were always consistent. Just, that's my opinion, I don't, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a planning commissioner.
Are there any other questions for staff?
So, I, I mean, so my original question is, what are the findings? Finding number four from the staff report, where it says the development is in compliance with the Form-Based Code by using the same material in the parking garage as the apartments, that seems clearly to be true. I mean, the engineering and the materials we saw, it's, seems fine. But what I'm not clear on is what does a finding have to be made stating that we're, that this project seeks to go forward with a, I mean, I don't know if you guys use the term variance for Form-Based Codes, but is this the kind of situation? Are they seeking a variance, or are they seeking some kind of action from us where we're letting them do something that is counter to a code? I mean, traditionally, we use the term variance. I don't see it in this report, so what's being asked?
The alternative compliance is similar, it's the Planning Commission Form-Based Code authority that is similar to the Board of Adjustment Variance Authority.
Okay, but because this is the Planning Commission's Form-Based Code, it's got its own?
Terminology.
Terminology?
Yes.
That run, oh, gotcha, okay. That was the missing piece. Being a new commissioner, thanks for bearing with me on that.
So, essentially, the findings are saying something about how they're attempting to still comply with the spirit of Form-Based Code, but in a different way. Like by screening the garage so that it doesn't look like a garage from the pedestrian level.
Correct.
As opposed to hiding it in the back.
Right, and I understood that part. And so, from the sense of the project itself, I guess, so if we're at the point where we're discussing this, the project itself is well-designed, well-engineered, well, well-rendered and planned, and a lovely thoughtful use of, clearly, of the site. And I understand all that. The one question in my mind is, what weight do we give the Form-Based Code? In that, when you look at this location being up along Duck there, right up across from Eskimo Joe's and an entertainment center, and not having been a commissioner here in the city back when those were written and developed, but guessing as a former urban planner that the point of having the setbacks, excuse me, the point of having the parking away from it was so that the people walking up and down the street aren't faced with a blank row just of endless wall and screen. With the intent being that you have a streetscape that has some life to it in terms of, traditionally, and I haven't seen the code, I didn't have a chance to reread it today, but traditionally- a chance to reread it today, but traditionally, like, traditionally, these type of codes would wanna see commercial retail on the ground floor, uses that can further draw in all that street traffic and the people that are coming to that area because of the draw from Eskimo Joe's and all the entertainment and the games and the, the, the tailgating and all of that, and so, the question actually is, are we okay with them being confronted with this long block of just sidewalk and wall and screen, as beautiful as it is and as appropriate it is for its structure? That's, to me, how I see the question before us, because this use does everything it was asked to do, I mean, in and of itself. How, so, I would love to hear if, if either of my fellow commissioners have a perspective on that, and how they see this project, I would love to hear, because I'm like, literally just neutrally on the fence with this case right now.
We had a similar conversation when we looked at this project previously and approved some other alternative compliances in terms of the facade. And that was, I mean, I think that was my understanding of Form-Based Code as well, is that what we hoped for was not just something that didn't scare pedestrians, but something that attracted pedestrians. But I, at the same time, we can't force developers to put stores of retail and-
I, yes.
So, I have, I have the same reservations you do with regard to not just having a blank wall of parking along a pedestrian walkway. At the same time, I like this plan better than the previous one.
You like this, this version better than the previous version because, can you?
Um, I, I didn't like the idea that on two facades, you would have something that looked like an apartment building, and on the other sides, you would have a block of parking garage. It seemed like sort of a privileging of some ways of looking at the building as opposed to others.
I, that's a good way of, I mean, so, I think that, that's helpful to hear, because I, I mean, I agree with that perspective of the, the way that these uses are incorporated, are a better use of the, the site. And I, I would say personally, I would love to have seen, the two, the two alternatives being, well, if this is set back, what's in place of it? Well, either presumably apartments, well, that creates the issue of, well, at that point, you then have people's apartments and living spaces butting right up against a streetscape where there's gonna be tailgaters and, and partying and parades and ideally, and, and all of the other street life that may or may not be, there's pros and cons to that. I mean, it's pros because you have all the people joining in, like, from their balconies, yay, when you have cons where you have people joining in from their balconies. So, and I'm, I guess, I'm deliberating out loud, I thank you for, for giving me this, the luxury of doing so, but if we're taking it as, assume that this is going to be residential, this is a good plan. Of course, I would love to see commercial along that front, but I was involved in a parking garage where we tried to put commercial on the front, and that's a different project, unfortunately, and it actually was hugely problematic, and so, all right, I can see how this project would be supportable, is what I think I'm saying at this point, if, if.
Yeah, I mean, I, I too didn't like that we gave up on the retail on the first floor when we discussed this before, I mean, that, to me, defeated the purpose of the Form-Based type of walkable. But once we allowed them to have the apartments, I mean, this now does the same thing. Now, the, the entrance-exit for the parking on Elm, I mean, yeah, on the Elm, I'm not as thrilled with as I would be-
It's better than on Duck, though?
It's better than, well, we, we can do it on Duck, because Duck, you know-
Yeah, no.
It better than, it'd probably be more druthers on the west side rather than on the north side, but we weren't given that all, you know, that wasn't one of them that was presented to us in this case. So, if we feel like that this-
Well, and it seems like they've gotta have the two entrances in order to be able to get in.
They gotta have two, one for one le-, they don't interact, one's one level, one's another level.
That's, so are there, is there only one entrance to each of the two levels, and-
That's it.
And fire code allows for that? That's, yeah, I, again, not being super familiar with Oklahoma codes.
Yes, it allows for it, as long as you're, you're still providing two exits with stairs, which we do provide.
Oh, okay, so the, there has to be pedestrian exits, but not, the cars don't require the-
We're, we're responsible for the welfare of, of the people, not the vehicles.
Gotcha, of course, okay, makes sense, thank you.
Okay. So, as such, do we have, do we have a motion for something?
I move that we accept staff findings and approve the alternative compliance as presented.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Has been moved and seconded that we accept the alternative to plan, the Form-Based Code compliance, and we will now vote on that.
Or not. Psych.
My voting software, so I'll just, I'll take a verbal vote.
Okay.
Commissioner Rickman?
For, or yes?
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman Brown?
Yes.
The motion passes three to zero, and that's sufficient as a majority of the, of the board. The next item for business on, on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff for discussion. Do we, will we do the, do we have minutes from last week that I need to approve this one? We do not, so, the next planning commission will, meeting will be on August 7th, 2018. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn. The motion-
Yay.
Passes three to zero.
Yes.
Not up there, but I promise you, that's what it said.
Definitely, all set.
Thank you all for being here this evening.